In the event of having to evacuate the council chamber, would everyone leave by one of the two exits at the rear of the chamber? Officers will be on hand to assist any people with disabilities. May I ask all members who have mobile phones with them to ensure that they are switched off so that they will not disturb this meeting? Agenda item number one, chairman's announcements. The Majesty, Lord Lieutenant Mike Capor OBE. On behalf of members and officers of the county council, may I place on record our heartfelt good wishes to Mike Capor on his appointment as Her Majesty's Lord Lieutenant of Leicestershire. Mike is a leading Leicestershire businessman who takes a keen and active role in developing and promoting the city and the county. He has made his home twenty-eight years ago. Visitors, I welcome to the meeting all visitors and guests and members and of course, anyone who may be joining us on the webcast today. Agenda item two, minutes of the previous meeting, pages three to twenty-two. I move that the minutes of the meeting of the county council held on the fifteenth of May two thousand and eighteen, copies of which have been circulated to members, be taken as read, confirmed and signed.
Do I second chairman please?
Thank you, Mr Jennings. Agenda item number three, declarations of interest. I invite members who wish to do so to make declarations of interest in respect of items on the agenda for this meeting. Are there any declarations? No, thank you. Agenda item four, questions asked on the standing order seven point one, two and five. The questions and replies set out on the order paper will be taken as read in minutes. I have received notice of supplementary questions and will now call upon the relevant members to put them. councillor Bolter, I understand you have a point of clarification.
Thank you chairman. Thank Mr Payne for his answers, however, he didn't ask the question I asked. Not unusual for a politician, but the question I asked was, question number two, why is the quality of grass cutting this year so poor? He chose not to answer that question. Now, unless he's been to the district I represent, he won't have seen it, but it's absolutely disastrous. We've got haystacks in parts of the area where the grass has been piled up by the moors. It could well catch fire if something doesn't ensue. So, I'd like to answer the question, please chair.
Mr Payne?
Thank you chairman, I'm happy to answer that general supplementary. I believe we have answered the question, especially in point two, we've explained that in the Blaby area, we've brought this back in-house, that's good for the Leicestershire taxpayer because of the economies of scale. As all members know, we now do our own grass cutting rather than subcontractor out. I've had some very positive comments about grass cutting this year in other areas. With reference to Blaby and the Blaby area and the Oby and Wigston area, that has now been brought back in-house, but as you know, we have a great service where people can find out what areas are being cut in their area online, and we don't have that digital information for Blaby and the Oby area. And we've answered the question directly, because we don't have that digital database at the moment, we are suffering some issues in that particular area, but generally speaking, we have a good quality service in Leicestershire, and I do believe that we've answered the question in point two below, chairman.
Thank you councillor Payne. Councillor Bill, you have a supplementary.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Can I thank Mr Payne for his answer on the question of Nutts Lane, and I look forward to supplying the evidence of HGVs using that road to the Borough Council, to Highways England and of course, to this authority. Thank you chairman.
Yeah, that wasn't a supplementary, that was a vote of thanks, thank you. Mr Bill, will it be a clarification for the next item?
Aye, Mr Chairman. First of all, I do welcome the reply inasmuch as it says that traffic speeds have increased on roads, and particularly along Coventry Road and Rugby Road, as it's been my concern for the last forty-five years to try to keep the speeds down on those roads. I look forward to the evidence on which that is based, and I also would just draw attention to my original question, which was to ask to see the evidence on which the assumption is based that traffic conditions have improved across the town, and in particular, I would like to ask-
Is there a question there?
There is a question coming.
Well, can it come please?
I will, yes, thank you chairman.
You know, we don't want to go round and, you know, the roundabout, let's get straight to the point.
This is important, I would like to ask that evidence is taken into account of the queues of traffic getting in and out of the town at peak times and at other times of the day, because this has increased, and I think people will not agree with the statement which is, has been made by the county council that traffic conditions in Hinkley have recently improved. Thank you chairman.
Thank you councillor Bill. Councillor Payne?
Again, thank you chairman, I'll answer as best I can that point. Just a general point, when this investment was made, Liberal Democrat members were clambering over themselves to take the credit for the initial investment into zones one to three. We've already put on record that we'd like to make further investment in terms of zone four, and we're pursuing funding for that, we have some of it. I have to say, the data has come from the Department for Transport themselves, traffic flows have increased, therefore, that is an improvement on what used to be, and I believe we've answered the question once again by stating it's come from the Department for Transport, this data, thank you.
Thank you councillor Payne. Move on now to agenda item five, to receive a position statement from members of the Cabinet. Councillor Rushton?
Chairman, thank you very much. My first, the first item on my position statement is the hosting of the Chinese on June the eleventh in Leicester. We're the longest lasting twinning relationship in the country, so we should be proud of it, Sichuan is one of the fastest growing areas of China, ninety million people live there, and also it's got a city in the middle, Guanzhu, which has twenty million people, so it's well worth having a relationship with them. Sometimes it's a bit little daunting because the chap who comes from China, General Huang, thinks I've got the sort of powers that he's got, and the sort of money that he's got, but he's certainly very, very useful to meet, an interesting person, and also in speaking to some of the people who are accompanying him, the word is, he's going places, he's very young to get that sort of position in China, so it's very, very useful to meet him and to have good relationships with him. I was also accompanied by Sir John Peace, who goes down well with the Chinese because he used to work for big banks over in China, he's well known, and he's popular with them. Also, Mr Lawrence O'Shea accompanied me, sitting in front here. So it was good to have Lawrence there as well, we had obviously City Mayor, and we had chancellors from Loughborough University and pro vice-chancellor of Leicestershire and Demont, and vice-chair of the LEAP, so we put on a blooming good show, we had well over a hundred delegates there, and the people that the Chinese have brought us with, the face-changing guy and the musicians, were really, really fantastic, and it just goes to show what they, what sort of event they can put on, and the sort of money and effort they demote to continuing the relationship with us. We also launched the Leicester-China strategy, it says there, don't need to add much more to it, it is what it is, and they've also asked me to go back to China next year. I said, I will go, but we've got to achieve something by going, being good friends with them is one thing, but I do need to go there with senior business leaders, senior politicians as well, to try and develop something more than good friends, and I'd also ideally like to get it sponsored, so A, so I don't have to fly cattle class, and B, it doesn't cost the electorate of Leicestershire money, because if you're going for four days, it's a blooming long way to go, and you need to have a proper agenda with proper senior people there to try and achieve something rather than just all be good mates. On the SGP, again, I'm very, very happy to compliment district leaders on the mag, and the, not only the district leaders, but Byron who's represented me on the mag for the absolutely fantastic work that they've done in developing the mag, and as it says in here, it's recognised across all manner of areas of government that I come across, mentioning in particular Midlands Engine, Holmes England and Midlands Connect, we're the only county that's done it. I know it's been tough, you know, taking houses from the city, especially for Market Harbour, and then Market Harpur having to be helped out by North West Leicestershire, and, sorry, Melton Mowbray now meeting to try and help out again, but I think it'll stand us in really, really good stead moving forward, and I'm happy to congratulate them on the work they've done. Trading Standards, Trading Standards actually falls under my portfolio, so I was happy to bring this. I don't want to call them a Cinderella department, but they are a relatively small department, but they do bat above their weight with the money they've got, and the scams intervention team here is a really good example of collaboration, because the money from the scams collaboration team actually comes from Richard's department, adult social care, so when people work together to deliver outcomes like we've delivered here, it is well worth bringing to full council to highlight it, and if any member is interested in the Trading Standards department, I think it's well worth you spending some time to go there and meet the officers in there, and also to support them, I was photographed and did a lot of stuff this week where I'm now a so-called scam ambassador. It's online if you want to see it, it's not, I don't know if it's on Twitter, but I've certainly supported it, and I have the badge at home. Health scrutiny, again disappointment with the NHS, disappointment with the CCGs, now they're going to give them another twenty billion pounds a year and we're going to get nothing, in my view, sometimes it just goes from bad to worse there, but I thank the Health and Scrutiny Committee for the work they're doing, and if we, if we ever could get to take over the CCGs and run it properly, that would be the way forward, because as far as I can make out, in the health sector in general, the only person that's in charge and accountable is the Secretary of State, and below that, there's billions of pounds spent with no accountability whatsoever. Loughborough University, very proud to announce this, Bob Allison, who's the pro vice-chancellor, told me a number of weeks ago this was coming, emailed me earlier this week he'd actually got it, it's a real coup for Loughborough, a real coup for Charmwood and Loughborough Town Centre in particular, so I'm pleased to announce that, and I won't say much more about it. And then the final one, which I only received a few, less than half an hour ago from Ivan, and something again, we should be really proud of, and I'm surprised that I didn't know about it earlier, is the influential women in government technology, and if you look here, we have four very senior women who work for this county council gaining this award, I won't read their names out, we all know who they are. I thank them for their work, and I'll conclude with that, chairman.
Thank you. Mr Galton?
Thank you chairman, and thank you leader for your report, which covers a range of issues, I'd like to just focus on two. First is the statement about China, and I welcome our twinning relationship there, and as he says, welcome that they had when they came here, and I believe twinning relationships are important, but I do have some concern about this idea that the leader goes on a visit, you know, given the county council's financial, dire financial situation, I would question whether we ought to be spending taxpayers' money at this time on that sort of thing. Now, leader said it might be possible to get sponsorship, that remains to be seen, but, you know, as he says, the Chinese credit this council with having a lot more power, a lot more influence and ability to deliver strategic things that are really in the hands of the government, and I just question whether that is the right thing. I note that his predecessor undertook a number of visits to China, well-publicised visits, expensive visits, very expensive visits, and, you know, I for one never understood what clear tangible benefits we got out of those visits, so the leader talks about bringing tangible benefits and needing to consider those, and I remain to be convinced, I think we'd need to understand more about what this purpose of this trip and what was to be achieved. And I, you know, I think this is probably better left in the hands of the Midland Engine and indeed, the LEAP. So, however, if he does go, you know, if I was in China as an opposition politician, I wouldn't be able to get up and question and make these sorts of statements. So if he does go, I think, Nick, you've got to raise human rights, you can't duck that if you go all the way there, and you've got to raise issues like Tibet. It can't just be a jolly, let's all do business together, without looking at the social and other aspects and the different ways in which they do things. So that would be my request, as he undertakes to raise human rights, and he can be briefed on that, I'm sure the embassy will brief him on that, and that is a standard thing that ministers who go on these trips do. So, moving on, the Strategic Growth Plan, so we're now at the stage, as I understand it, where the consultation's closed, there's been an initial look at the four hundred and fifty-odd responses, and I hope that they will be published, so we can all see those. I am aware of some of those because people sent me them, and I think some of the ones that need to be looked at very carefully or significant would be the contribution of the CPRE, and there are a number of others that raise quite serious and significant concerns. I will draw attention to the late evidence of a number of reports that were not published and not available at the time the consultation started, and therefore the consultation had to be extended, key amongst those were the sustainability appraisal and the transport assessment. In fact, I find it quite incredible that the cabinet considered its response to the Strategic Growth Plan without having the Jacobs Transport Report, because if you read that, and it is available online, that is saying that even if you build this road, by the end of that planning period, you will still have significant major transport congestion problems, unless there is a lot of investment in other routes, particularly the radial routes in and out of Leicester, and it talks about the interventions that would be needed, including demand management, including things like that have been done in other areas like London, and including radical intervention to get people out of cars onto public transport. Now, none of that was available, none of that information, of that Jacobs Independent Transport Assessment of the plan was available, either when the cabinet or scrutiny considered it, so scrutiny will be coming back to this, we've already asked to see it again in September. And then finally, on this, I would just contrast the process that's being used, he, the leader praises the mag, but let's just contrast the process that's being used to put this plan together compared to a local plan, whether it be our waste plan or a district local plan. The whole thing's open, the decisions are taken in public, the members of the public can make representations, they know who's taking those decisions, they're accountable, all the evidence is published as it comes out. I just contrast this closed process that the mag adopts, a private, behind-the-close-door meetings of a few people who happen to hold the planning lead positions or transport lead positions, compared to the statutory local plan process which requires you to be open, transparent, and there is a major deficit in terms of accountability with this plan. So, in my opinion, I can't agree with his positive statement, I think that those four hundred and fifty representations raise a lot of issues that have yet to be resolved. Thank you chair.
Thank you, Mr Galton. Dr Iron, please.
Thank you chair, and I too am pleased to hear councillor Rushton speak about our excellent relationships with China, having worked as a GP at Loughborough University, I'm well aware of the number of Chinese students that come to this area, and I'm pleased to see that the universities were involved, and I'm also pleased that he, that while recognising the importance of friendship with China, he's not planning on having just a jolly at public expense, and that is clearly something that we would want all to hold him to as councillors, and that if he does go to China to see our friends, that there will be a clear agenda with some outcomes that we would want to see. Councillor Galton's points about the Strategic Growth Plan are well-made, I think it's very difficult to strategically work on a growth plan, and I'm aware that we've got local plans in all of our district councils, we've got for some of our town and parish councils, neighbourhood plans, and I do hope that at some point in the future, we can have a more unitary approach to tackling planning across this region and beyond, across Leicestershire and regionally with our partners in Nottingham, Derby and so forth, it would be good if we could get this together, as you know, it was in our Labour manifesto, so I do have to keep going on about it. Health scrutiny, it is appalling, I have to agree with councillor Rushton that the CCGs have spurned the opportunity to merge their senior management structures, I do have to point out of course that it was about sort of twenty eleven-ish, we had a combined PCT across Leicestershire and Leicester City, and it was, there was a Health and Social Care Act came in, and that's how we ended up with three CCGs, and there was a sort of top-down reorganisation of the NHS that everyone said we weren't going to have. So naturally, it would be nice if we could get this all back together, and I do agree with the frustration expressed by councillor Rushton. I'm also concerned at the way that our CCGs seem to see their role, in a recent Members' News in Brief, we were told that thirty percent of GP appointments are non-medical. I mentioned this to Helen Stokes-Lampard when I saw her the other day, she's the Chair of the World College of GPs, and she just kind of sighed, and seemed to agree with my suggestion that there is almost a wish from the NHS to find more things that are non-medical so that someone else, otherwise known as us, as social prescribers, that they can refer to us as social prescriptions, and I'm very concerned about that, so I will be clearly working with a cross-party to support the statements made by councillor Rushton about the NHS. Very happy about Loughborough University and getting its lawn tennis, I do hope that that will mean that our specialist sports colleges and schools are able to feed into this, so that our own youngsters can move on, and naturally, as the Labour group, we are very keen on women getting further in our society and overcoming some of the more structural problems, and it's marvellous that someone is highlighting the role of women in technology in local government, and again, I wouldn't want to read out the names, but I know them, and it'll be a pleasure to go online, and I hope we will all be doing that. Thank you chair.
Thank you, Dr Iron. Dr Felton?
Thank you chairman, a couple of things, Trading Standards, I mean clearly, this work by this team is invaluable, I would remind them though, that it's not just postal, telephone or doorstep, it's email as well, very close relative of mine got caught by all this lot, and it wasn't just postal, I mean, she ended up sending paltry amounts of money relatively, but lots of it, receiving very paltry, rubbishy gifts, which were purporting to be, you know, necklaces and bracelets and things, but in fact, yes, well over ten thousand pounds went out before we managed to get it stopped, and it was thanks to this team, so, but it was emails as well, it's not just the stuff that comes through the door. And secondly, particularly about the health scrutiny, delighted leaders highlighted this particular issue, I mean, when the Health Scrutiny Committee met the other week, it was my first opportunity as chairman, and this paper looked promising, I've met with one of the senior managers of one of the CCGs beforehand, who was, seemed okay about it, appreciated it might be her job that was at risk, but still appreciated what they were trying to do, and we did, as the paper says, robustly scrutinise them, particularly over the, you know, are you going far enough, you know, it's all very well bringing together your senior management, but what about going full merger? So this is really disappointing, the fact that they've not even agreed that simple step, and that was just the two county CCGs, to make it co-terminus with the police, actually with the acute sector, because obviously EHL covers the whole area, the fire authority does, it would make a huge amount of sense, and obviously some savings, which as the leader says here, that savings would go directly towards the frontline services, so very disappointed, but thank the leader for bringing it up today.
Thank you, Dr Felton. I now have Mr Bill.
Question of the Strategic Growth Plan, I'm sure we're all delighted that the mag, the Members Advisory Group is so enthusiastic about this, but as Simon said, it would be rather nice if members of that group could actually relay to us, ordinary members, exactly what it is they are agreeing to, because this is of importance to all of us, and so far, it has only been retained by a magic few. Pleased to hear that the district council leaders are so enthusiastic about the whole thing, and I'm not so sure whether the same enthusiasm is shared by our MPs who have written a question, a letter, I understand, to the, into the system to question various aspects, and have had a reply. I'm not so sure as members we've actually seen that question or the reply, but that would be useful for us to build up a picture of what's going on. Later on in this report, you will see that the scrutiny commission has questioned, under the question of the growth plan, the need for infrastructure, and we were questioning the need to ensure that at the same time as all this growth is taking place, that such things as hospitals, health centres, surgeries and schools are provided at the same rate. We're not convinced it's going to happen, and I'm rather disappointed that in this report from the leader, that there is no mention here of the requirement for infrastructure. The infrastructure that is mentioned incidentally is the A46 expressway, and now I understand from reports that I've seen, and which I don't think have been circulated to members of this authority yet, and that is that the A46 expressway, it confirms in fact that it's part of a new road to run from the, a new improved road to run from the Bristol Channel to the Humber Estuary passing through Leicestershire, and therefore it's going to carry a massive amount of traffic, nobody knows exactly how much because that hasn't been quantified, but when it comes through Leicestershire, as I read the report, and I stand to be corrected, that there are two options being considered. One is the A46 expressway, which is being promoted by this authority, and the other one is an improvement of the M1 and existing A46, which personally I think is the shorter route and would make more sense, but I would, I would welcome a future report on these two options, and for a discussion to take place in this chamber and elsewhere on the desirability of pursuing one option or the other. Thank you chairman.
Thank you, Mr Bill. Mr Mulaney?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. On the issue of the health scrutiny and the financial struggles of the CCGs, we've heard recently the government has finally decided to give a large amount of extra money to the NHS. Can I ask that the leader, working with MPs, lobby his government to ensure that our county gets a fair share of that extra money for our NHS, because too often our area misses out, whether it's on the Midland Main Line not getting electrified, or the lack of funding that this county council has, one of the lowest funded in the country, it's about time that our area did get a fair share of funding, so can I ask him please to use his position, along with the MPs, to lobby for some of that money to come to Leicestershire? In my own area of Hinkley, we face losing the local hospital on Mount Road without any replacement facility that our area needs, a growing large population, Hinkley needs some replacement centre such as a walking centre or minor injuries unit, so if the leader could use his influence to try and pressure the government into giving our area a fair share of that money for the NHS, it would be welcome.
Thank you, Mr Mulaney. Mr Rhodes, please.
Thank you chairman, I want to comment on the Strategic Growth Plan as well, because I'm a member of the Members Advisory Group for several years now, and initially, at some time ago, I was there in a different capacity, representing one of the district councils, and then it came off it and now represent the county council on it. The point about the work of the Members Advisory Group in this is that it is providing that strategic input to the local plans, it's not the same thing as creating a local plan, if you tried to create a local plan for the whole of Leicestershire, it would undoubtedly deserve a great deal of criticism from the district councils in regard- deserve a great deal of criticism from the district councils in regard this as being their responsibility. So it doesn't attempt to do that but what it's providing is a strategic direction, an agreement between the district councils and between the county and the Leppers well and between, and the city, as to how things should be allocated between the different areas in order to achieve the government's growth targets and especially growth targets in respect of housing. Now we get a lot of criticism continually from Liberal Democrats and Mr. Galton and Mr. Bill have both done this over the question of the, of the A46 Link Road. Well indeed there is a concept talked about, and again it is a concept being talked about, of an expressway running all the way from the Humber down to the Bristol Channel to help relieve congestion round Birmingham. Perfectly worthy and reasonable approach to take and we've incorporated that because it actually suits the arrangement for Leicestershire as it happens. Because that, by building that in there, it creates the opportunities for providing the travelling infrastructure for development in the south of the county, which undoubtedly will have to take place after 2036. And by the way, we're talking about after 2036 because local plans run up to about that level so we're talking something like eighteen years at least in the future. Although I do concede that we'll probably start to think about building some of it before. But it is, it does need further development as indeed do other infrastructure works associated with it. I mean it can't just sit there on its own, it would, it would have junctions and these would connect with other links as well. So the further work is undoubtedly needed. The point about the work of the strategic growth, growth plan is that it is work in progress, it will have further work done on it and much more detailed work eventually but in the local plans which are developed for each, each, each area of the county after 2036. I really do think Liberal Democrats need to, need to, need to learn something about planning because they see things absolutely in that microcosm of detail which can't, can't be done at strategic levels. There are two levels to planning and the Members' Advisory Group is trying to create that strategic direction. Just one comment on the fair share of NHS. Mr. Mulaney's a late convert to fair funding, what a wonderful concept. We've seen it first of all in, in schools, now, now we see it in local government and now of course the NHS. And it is fair to say, and I've talked to NHS colleagues about this, that the same sort of thinking and approach to distribution of funding in the country applies to the NHS as it applies to local government. And indeed, indeed, there is, there is a case to be made for more, a greater share of NHS funding coming to Leicestershire. For once I'm in agreement with Mr. Mulaney. Wonderful never ceases. Thank you, Chairman.
Final speaker on this item, Mr. Pollard. Pollan, shall I say?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and thank you to the leader for the statement. I just wanted to speak really on the Leicestershire links with China. Obviously it's one of the longer established ones in this country, it's been important to the, to the county for some time but the reality is it's only going to get more important to this county as Britain looks to the wider world after Brexit. Therefore, anything we can do to increase business links with, with those areas in the years ahead certainly should be, should be welcomed. If that means a trip to China, if we can get it funded, then fine, that's great. But the reality is that those are going to be vital links to our county and in fact to our country going forward. Really I just wanted to ask on, on a similar vein if there are any plans at all to build on the other emerging economies. This is a great concept but obviously the reality is the 21st centuries, the acts of India, South America, some of the African nations, those, if we can build similar links with those countries will be in a really strong position going forward to the middle of the century.
Thank you, Mr. Rushton.
In reply to James First, I tend, I type of agree with him. Sometimes I think we do over-focus on China and the so-called BRIC economies are, I think, just as valuable as China. And I always comment on India in particular, we have excellent relations with India because a lot of Indians live in Leicester. I don't know why we don't play more to the Indian subcontinent as much as we do to China. So I'm, I'm with you on that. On the China visit, obviously I don't particularly want to go, it's a long way, it's four days, it's a lot of work but I did say I would go if, A, it can be sponsored because it's a long way to go and they stick you at the back near the toilets, so it needs sponsorship and also I need to go with proper people who are going to do proper business. I'm not willing to go there on a jolly. I don't need jollies, I'm not a David Parsons, I don't like jollies and I don't, and I don't go on jollies. So you rest assured that I will not be going at all unless they convince me that it's in Leicestershire's interest or the LEP's interest or the Midlands engine's interest. I won't be going and I'll certainly need to see outcomes and sponsorship to go. On the strategic growth plan, Byron has done an excellent job of responding to the questions from Simon and from Terry and from, even from Mr. Bill on it. It isn't my plan. Byron has done ninety percent of the work of going to the Mag. Up until the last three meetings, leaders did not attend but even Odeley Wigston sent someone, some of you members over there may well be on Odeley Wigston Borough Council, I'd imagine. And now their leader goes to the, the meetings, John Boyce, because he's the leader. I now go, I should, I think my last one is probably on Monday and then I think the leaders stop going. I can only compliment on the work they've done and to say it's not, it's not been consulted on, it's, it's like Byron's saying, he's not a statutory document, he's not a local plan and doesn't require the sort of consultation that a local plan which sits underneath it does. And that is exactly what I told the members of Parliament who did write to me, saying that I shouldn't be producing a strategic growth plan. Now they might be saying that locally but when they're down in London, they're voting a different way and telling me we should be putting together a strategic growth plan. So they can't say one thing in Parliament and another thing locally and I did reply to them in that vein and I've heard nothing, nothing more sense on them. In terms of NHS, my, okay, Miss, I'm with Byron, of course I'll be pressing for as much as we can for Leicestershire. We definitely do not get enough money in Leicestershire, we definitely do not get enough money in the East Midlands, let alone Leicestershire and we certainly don't get enough local government funding in Leicestershire and the East Midlands. So if you're on side, we welcome you to the table. The most important, on the women who've made it through to the final shortlist at the back, it is important that we do vote. We'll be up against other areas where county councillors will be voting for that particular female who's made the list. So if we can all vote and encourage friends to vote and if the chief could send out an email to the staff here asking them to also vote for our own in-house team, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rushton. Now move to a position statement from the lead member for Environment and Transport, Mr. Payne.
Many thanks, Chairman. You've all had the position statement and there are four items on there. It's a great privilege to once again stand here a year on and report back to council about the performance of the highways department in terms of the road conditions in Leicestershire. Now, I know we've had a particularly harsh winter and I know at times it may seem that to some of us road users, that the roads aren't in top condition and I think the department would concur with that. But to see that not only the National Highways and Transportation Survey has concluded that we have some of the best roads in the country but now once again the Department for Transport through their own work have concluded that Leicestershire has the best roads in the country. We know there's much more work to do, which is why we've got a really ambitious programme. The department have identified that they need eight million pounds worth of monies to deal with the defects that they've engineered and analysed and we have three million pounds available, or we did have three million pounds available to deal with that this year. I'm really pleased to say because of the approach that Byron's taken in the finance department, that the cabinet's been able to allocate further five million pounds recently towards that eight million pounds for us to fast-track some of these defects and take a more preventative approach to patching our roads and hopefully that will stand us in good stead and we'll have even better roads and hopefully we can keep ourselves on the top of that survey each year in terms of Leicestershire's road condition. I think it's also notable, just to mention one other thing, and I think I mentioned this last year. When we look at the performance of the department and this goes through scrutiny as well, there's a chart that identifies performance against spend in terms of our road conditions. I mentioned to council last year that under the proposals for the MTFS by 2020/21, the department would have had about sixteen million pounds worth of funding available to deal with maintaining our roads. To put that in perspective, we would have had over thirty million pounds back in 2009. In fact, that's what we spent. So they've created miracles to be able to keep the roads in the condition they have but if the spending had continued from 2009 to 2010 up to 2020/21, we'd have the equivalent of over forty million pounds worth of expenditure to spend. So they really are getting great value out of the resources they are having to work with. We've put more in but I think that's a real credit to the management and the team that work in the department. The second point I'd like to raise is the recycling and household waste sites. Again, we've taken these back in-house and it made sense to do so from an economic perspective and I'm delighted to say that a survey has also been conducted and I think there was about three thousand six hundred and seventy-five respondents to that survey and ninety-eight point nine percent were either fairly or very satisfied with the service at our fourteen recycling and household waste sites. Again, that's a credit to the staff that work for Leicestershire County Council that operate those sites, sometimes under very difficult conditions because millions of people use these sites each year and I'd like us to pay tribute as a council to the work they do and the fantastic result that we've had from them. The Melton-Mobry distributor road, this is a huge success story. You know, it's a great story of partnership working but again, it's a, a great indictment of the quality of commissioning within the department to get where we've got to. Members will all know by now that we've had the green light to deliver the Melton-Mobry distributor road and that could end up being a hundred and five million pound project. At the moment, we've got sixty-three point five million pounds confirmed but I want to put on record how pleased and how proud we all should be of the work of the department and of Byron and the Melton-Mobry councillors and indeed Sir Alan Duncan who's also played a pivotal role in getting us to the stage we're, we're at. I think it's important, again, just to put this in perspective if I may, when we went through a restructure a couple of years ago as a department, the department was set up to deliver sixteen million pounds worth of capital projects by 2019. Roughly between this year and next year, we had a programme of sixteen million pounds worth of capital projects. We've either got, either confirmed for delivery or awaiting, awaiting approval, two hundred and sixty-five million pounds worth of projects with the same structure of staff. We've done that and this is really important. The government used to allocate money to us, they've now moved to a competitive tender. We're brilliant at winning monies through a competitive process and I think we should pay tribute to the department for the work they do in commissioning because to have a two hundred and sixty-five indicative million, indicative programme is testament to some great, great work. The challenge for us now is with the resources we've got, being able to deliver this and that's not going to be easy but we're up for the challenge. And finally, I just want to put on record some notable accolades and awards. We've had an award for the Lubbersthorpe Strategic Employment Site. Infrastructure has been recognised and won top prize in the teamwork category from East Midlands Institute of Civil Engineers. We've been awarded an accolade, we've been commended rather, by the Chartered Institute of Highways and Transport and Tarmac Collaboration Award for our work in terms of the Midlands Highways Alliance and Midlands Highways Alliance are the body where we get contractors in to deliver some of those major projects I've just spoken about. And finally, we have a member of staff called Sunny Tolefari who is, I understand, a wizard. He's generated the transport modelling that we're all probably, probably familiar with by now. A lot of entities up and down the country, a lot of the borough and councils use that modelling to inform their local planning and to assess the impacts. We tweak it each year and it's, it's an exemplar in its field and Sunny Tolefari has won a lifetime achievement award for his work in that respect. So we're all proud of him. And if I may, I know the influential Women in Government Technology Awards, you can vote three times and we have four nominations from the council but I really should encourage everyone to choose and cor others, who's the director of the department, as one of their nominations because clearly she's doing a fantastic job with her team. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Mr. Hunt, please.
Blake in his remarks about the success and indeed the legacy that we've, we've received over the years from engineers on our highways. And I think he, he addressed that in a very modest way because, you know, we have got big challenges ahead and I'm pleased to see that he recognised that. Same time, I do think he brings to his office the enthusiasm that is really needed particularly when officers are really up against it with so many projects. So I have really welcomed his, his comments. Just, just an aside about unclassified roads, if I may make a, a short comment about cyclists. Potholes and maintenance is really, really important from a road safety point of view to cyclists in particular, many of whom enjoy Leicestershire roads on a weekly basis and, and that's terrific. I'm going to skip to the, the final awards because I was delighted to see that my old mate, Sunny Tolefari, with whom I share some, some reflected glory, has been awarded. I, I wouldn't have thought he would have a life, I wouldn't have thought he was old enough to have a lifetime achievement because I met him when he was a student at Loughborough University and I wouldn't say I gave him much advice but when I called to see him to complain about the litum, I was actually quite shocked to see it was actually Tolly I was having to, to deal with and he certainly dealt with me. So that's great to hear of all the commendations that are going on from the department and particularly from, for Sunny Tolefari. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Mr. Bolter?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, nice to see the report. High performance, yes, it's nice, no extra money's been allocated to that to repair some of the damaged roads we have got and it's a nice move away from what the previous assistant director said, we're going to manage the decline of our network. Hopefully that's now been reversed and we're going to improve our network, especially the B-class roads. Regarding household and refuse waste sites, it's nice to know they've been taken back in-house, I'm always in favour of doing things in-house if it's all possible, gives us more flexibility but is the lead member going to consider opening the sites other than the, the five days they're open now, to open them seven days a week as they're so popular? It's only in the summer, it would help stop some of the fly tipping that takes place throughout the county. When people turn up and find they're shook because they've got the wrong day, they tend to drive basically to Harbour District and deposit it on the, on the edge of Harbour District, let them pick it up. So I would thought that if they are successful, they may consider opening them, even if in the summertime, seven days a week rather than five days. I'm interested in his reply, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bolter. Now, Mr. Beer, please.
Cheers, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councillor Payne, very exuberant, very, very forthcoming, very energetic about his portfolio and rightly he should be but unfortunately I think a bit of realism needs to, to come in there. I don't know what kind of roads he's driving on or walking past or, or walking on the pavements but in Loughborough East, if you're going to take probably the worst road network in the county, you probably want to come to Loughborough East and I challenge him to spend an afternoon with me and I'll show him what the road network is really like for everyday folk. I can show him the potholes that don't get filled in for two or three weeks at a time. I can show him the detritus on the edge of, between the pavement and the, and the road and the weeds that are growing. I can show him where we've slurry sealed, or whatever it's called, and never, ever have come back to pick up the stone chippings that are littering the side of the pavements and the roads and making it look awful. And I can show him all that because that's what's happening in, in Loughborough East. I can't talk for everywhere else but I can talk about there. I walk to work every day from my house at one edge of, of my division to the town centre. I follow different routes as I can and things don't seem to be improving, Mr. Chairman. And I want to challenge him to spend an afternoon with me to, 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 to visualise what I'm visualising and seeing what I'm seeing because what I'm seeing is probably what everyday folk are seeing and not what his officers are telling him. There's been massive cutbacks in his department. I think a couple of years ago, a third, two thirds of the funding's gone and that has led to our road networks actually physically crumbling and we haven't had that investment where we can put, reinstate all our roads to a good standard. So we're doing patchwork and we're trying to, to, to fill in what we can. So that's, that's one thing I'd like him, you know, I'll send him an email to come and spend an afternoon with me and to see how it's really like. The other one is the recycling household waste satisfaction survey. The other one is the recycling household waste satisfaction survey. Fantastic that our recycling household waste are doing well. Unfortunately, they're not open as long as they used to be. And I agree, and I concur that fly tipping is on the increase. And we need to remodel this in Charmwood. We've decided to close all our bring sites, and that's going to be phased in in the next couple of months. And it really does worry me that if we're retrenching from recycling and sending out that signal to the public, what they're going to do is fill up their cars, find a lay-by that's secluded and dumped the rubbish by the side of the road. And that will cost us more in the long run to either prosecute people and find them, if we can find them, or to clean it up. But in between, I think we need to work with the public to educate them, to let them know that these recycling centres that the county council has are still open and are available for them to use. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Mear. Final speaker, Mr Parton, please.
Thank you very much. I'd actually like to summarise what I'm going to say in two words. The first word is relationships, the second word is teamwork. And I've really found this, it's been really enlightening with my sort of relationships with the highways department. And I just decided that this would be the way to do it. So having met Ankeruthers, Ian Veers, many of the junior officers, getting to know them, visiting them, visiting the Mount Sorrel depot, all aspects to do with highways and building up a network of contacts. And through that, it's been transformational. Loughborough South has areas where the road is crumbling. But by building these relationships and getting the teamwork, we've worked together. And slowly but surely, we're transforming Loughborough South, getting the road condition sorted where essential. Because, you know, I'm realistic to know that I can't expect huge amounts of resurfacing and pothole infilling. But it's been a revelation. So I'd like to place on my record the thanks to the staff at the highways department. And in particular, I mean, all you have to do is walk up to the top floor and just go and see the secretary. And she's been so helpful to me, just give me contacts and I've built up a network, and it's been a revelation. And finally, to say that when you come into this job and you see something that's happened in the past, you see the effects of the inner relief road and the town centre professionalisation in Loughborough, you have to deal with the snags that that causes. And again, they've been nothing but helpful in working with me to try and address the final problems that have been caused by the very successful scheme. So I'd like to place on record my thanks for the relationships we've built up and the teamwork. And it's all because of the attitude of the staff there that have been wanting to help.
Thank you, Mr Parton. I turn my regular up on the top floor, I think the dread's seeing me. Mr Payne.
Well, let's start off with Ted. We are in another sweepstake to finish by about 3.20, so I'll try and speed through my responses. Just, I'll probably lose. But thank you, Ted. Some fantastic comments there, and I know you're such a hardworking local councillor. I see your emails, you copy me into a few of them. But I know you take the initiative to use thehighwayscustomerservices.gov.uk. And you'll know that we've put a lot of work in with my support member, Christian Radford, to try and improve, and we'll continue to put that work in to improve the member experience. And we're looking to improve the parish member experiences too, when it comes to their communications with the department. And I'm absolutely with you, we have a terrific top team down there, not just top team, the whole team. And where they can, they will bend over backwards to try and accommodate members' concerns. It's a pity my enthusiasm isn't so infectious, Mr Mear. Maybe I need to work harder at passing some of my enthusiasm on to you. Because actually, Mr Parton, I think we've got a great local councillor here that's obviously on top of his casework. If he's got problems with his road network, and may I remind members, there's two and a half thousand miles of work, roads, sorry, in Leicestershire. You know, it's a huge network. Obviously, a lead member can't look at every single yard of that road network. But we have members in this room, and you can play a pivotal part in increasing and making sure that the road network continues to improve. So what I'd suggest is, rather than invite me, I've already visited your area with Mr Morgan, as leader of the Loughborough-Charmwood Council. And we've walked that area, and he's shown me some of the issues, the transport issues most recently. I'm aware of the area, but please use thehighwayscustomerservices.gov.uk to report your concerns. And I'm pretty sure that you'll be satisfied with the attention that you get. I'll deal with the two waste and recycling issues. Mr Bolter raised the opening time, so did yourself, Mr Mayor. We have no proposals to go back on those opening times. They were well thought through when we introduced them. We introduced them in the interests of budgetary constraints, as you know. But I'm pretty happy that the accessibility of our waste sites, we have 14, remember, I think Leicester City have two. And we have far more per capita than pretty much every other region or county in the country, bar probably one or two. So we have an impressive amount of waste and recycling sites for our residents to use. And the way we can keep them open is by controlling the opening times. And by and large, they're open at the times that people would like to use them. And I think the data that we have from the satisfaction surveys demonstrates that. In terms of fly tipping, yeah, that's an interesting one. I just need to put on record, because we constantly look at this, although it's a borough district council function, fly tipping, we have committed county council resources through my instruction over a couple of years to the, if only, campaign, you've probably seen it. I know there are other campaigns being run locally by district borough councils. But the prosecution rates do need to rise at borough district council level because I firmly believe that if you want to put an incentive out to those criminals that are perpetrating fly tipping, they need to be prosecuted, and the message will soon get through. There is a cost to that, though, I accept. But we haven't seen from the data that's reported to myself and my support member any evidence to suggest that the charges or the opening times has affected the incident numbers of fly tipping. So I think it's a misnomer to suggest that we've got a problem out of kilter with the national trends when it comes to fly tipping. And finally, Max, thank you for your comments. So, Mr Tollifari, yeah, I've heard that you've had some interesting discussions over the years with him. But let's just say, he does represent a niche area of business, but we commend him nonetheless. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Payne. Now move on to agenda item number six, report to the scrutiny commission. Mr Galton, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm very pleased to present the annual scrutiny report. This is something that happens every year. But of course, this report marks the first year in the life of the current council. New members and chairman of the committees have reinvigorated their efforts to make sure that the county council services are delivered effectively and efficiently, and that they meet the needs of local people. Now, of course, as everyone knows, the challenging financial position faced by the council continues. And scrutiny has played its part, acting as critical friend to the cabinet on proposals to review services provided to some of the more vulnerable residents. Where possible, we have sought to hear the views of service users and their families and to reflect those in our comments to the cabinet. And I think that that is one very positive aspect of scrutiny that the cabinet doesn't have. And that is that we have, on a regular basis, members of the public, partners, experts, that are not directly employed by the county council, come and give us their views. And we can pass and listen to those. And you really do hear some very, very strong and heart-wrenching concerns. And I think recently of SEN Transport, Maplewell-Makerell Hall, you know, there were really were some issues there. And I'm not, obviously, the cabinet's got to get on and make decisions, we appreciate that. But listening to those views, it can't fail but to influence what you feel and that people's concerns are real and need to be taken on board. So I also want to make the comment that, and I've said it before, that the executive really has nothing to fear from an effective, proactive scrutiny system that provides that challenge and puts forward alternatives and options for the administration to consider. And the more we do that, the more, I think, improves decision-making and encourages those that make decisions on the cabinet to reflect on those decisions and examine all the options and possibilities. So it's impossible to refer to every report and every highlight. And I'm sure members of individual committees, well, if they wish to, may want to comment. But what we've done in this report is pick out the key items that scrutiny has looked at during the course of the year. So I will pick up on the issue of the scrutiny commission, where of course the medium-term financial strategy plays a very important part, both the monitoring and indeed the budget, if you like, for the following year, comes every year. And as we've already discussed, we looked at the strategic growth plan and the importance of infrastructure, if that is to go ahead. And we've talked about that earlier, but we do need to come back to that because from what I hear, there will be changes proposed to the plan that we are very keen to see and have an input at scrutiny. But perhaps some of the other areas of work that we've been able to undertake this year, not necessarily directly connected to services run by the council. I would highlight the session we had with Seven Trent Water, which I know a number of members commented to me, they found it extremely useful in understanding how they manage water supply, what they're doing to address housing growth, both that we know about now and indeed what might come forward to 2050. And of course, members also took the opportunity to raise issues that affect their areas, both in terms of water and sewage and so on and so forth. And then we looked at some issues that, again, were not directly connected, but they are connected to the services that the county council provides. So we looked at poverty and inclusion services, and that was off the back of the Bishop's Poverty Commission. And the impact of welfare reform and universal credit, the experts who came to talk to us highlighted those as absolutely key issues that affect our residents and indeed services that we deliver. And then we also looked, Chairman, at reducing offending by adults and the changes which, again, have been mentioned in the national media this week regarding the changes to the probation service and how our partners in the police, the Police and Crime Commissioner, and indeed youth justice services that we provide, link in with the National Probation Service. So I think in summary, Chairman, it has been an active, proactive year. There are numerous items in this report that we have mentioned. And I will close, I'm happy to take any questions or respond to members' concerns, of course. But I will close in just drawing your attention to a new item, a way of setting things out in terms of what we've done on page 42. And you can see a summary there, with the 29 committee meetings held, 111 reports considered, 33 times comments were submitted to the cabinet, and that resulted in 58 hours of public debate. So that's a good way of seeing the work that's been done. And I'll just mention, looking forward, we have been asked to suggest that there should be a more detailed look at our corporate parenting role and our responsibilities as individual members. And the scrutiny commissioners will, are considering that and what useful role scrutiny can play in reviewing corporate parenting, which I'm sure all members will agree is extremely important. And then just in closing, it's impossible to thank everyone in terms of the officers that support scrutiny in democratic services, the directors that come and their staff and service managers and so on. But we always have candour, well-presented reports from officers who then engage in the system and explain why certain things are. So I wouldn't want to sit down from presenting this annual report without thanking all the officers that are involved in scrutiny and those that come to scrutiny from the service departments. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Galton. Mrs Page, I understand you're second in this agenda.
No light. Oh, now I am. Thank you very much, Chairman. A very comprehensive report and very comprehensive introductions from councillor Galton. So there's very, very little I can actually add to that. And as you can see, there has been a lot of activity. But most important, there were the outcomes which all have been extremely positive. And that's not only thanks to all of the officers and the partners, but it is thanks, that is thanks to all of you. And I would like to reiterate the things councillor Galton already said to officers, partners, but of course, all of your members and the members of the commissions who made this a success, but also to councillor Galton, who has been very, very good and moved us forward in a very positive manner over the last year. So all in all, it has been a very good year, and I'm sure the next year will be even better. So I'm happy to second this annual report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs Page. Now, Dr Irons, please.
Thank you, Chair. I am very pleased to support this report, and I thank councillor Galton for his excellent introduction to it and councillor Page for seconding it. I could go and pick highlights out of this excellent report, but you'll be glad to hear I won't. I don't have any money in the sweepstake, but it's 23 degrees outside and the sun's shining, and it doesn't happen very often. I totally agree with councillor Galton. We as a council, whichever party we are in, have nothing to fear from scrutiny. That we all have a lot to fear in situations where scrutiny cannot happen. And this council, I think, has an extremely good track record on scrutiny. And I want to thank everyone who is named on page 44, and particularly those who are no longer with us, for the excellent work that they've put in. And of course, the officers who have done the hard work of putting the papers together. And I want to, at this point, say something to the people watching on the webcast. Maybe there's a few people behind in the audience, there might be someone, which I do hope so because next week is National Democracy Week, and people often wonder, what do politicians do? They read the tabloid press, and they watch the telly, and they go on social media, and they think that we all shout at each other. And it's not true, not in scrutiny, is it? If they were to sit in our scrutiny meetings, they would see what we do as politicians and what we do very well here in Leicestershire. This is a huge institution. It handles huge amounts of public money. It manages services that affect people's lives in all detail. They often don't even know to what extent they are indebted to the work of this council and the officers here. And residents need to know that it is working efficiently and effectively for them. And that is our job as scrutineers, to ensure that we are doing the right job here at this council. And this report really does demonstrate the work that's been done by all the politicians from all the three major political parties to ensure that we have here in Leicestershire representative democracy. And so I'm going to be talking to those people out there, hopefully listening to us, Chair, watching on the webcast, and encourage them to follow the process of scrutiny. If they really want to know what politicians do, read this report, go online, look at the webcast. They're now all on YouTube, isn't it wonderful? And I'd like again to thank all of the councillors and the democratic services officers who have made this report possible.
Thank you, Dr Irons. Mr Ustam, please.
Briefly, Chairman, because I'm already out of the sweepstakes. At the moment, I think the favourite is Mo at 3.30. Thanks for that, Terry. National Democracy Week, I forgot to mention it earlier on. Most of myself, Terry and Simon were photographed earlier on supporting National Democracy Week, and it's good of you to highlight it, so thank you very much. Can I say, as the leader of the administration, that we value scrutiny, we resource it well, and we appreciate the work that all members do on scrutiny. And I'd just like to pay a small tribute, as it says in the paper, to David Slater, a good friend, who passed away this year, who did chair the Transport and Overview and Scrutiny Committee. So thanks to David, and personally, I wish he was still here. A couple of highlights, which I appreciate the work that you have done on. Mr Bill thinks nobody ever looks at the strategic growth plan, but it was actually one of the things that the scrutiny commission looked at. So I suggest you start attending the scrutiny commission. Ah, so you did have it then. You said earlier you didn't. On the adults and communities, great work on detox, which was pretty much bounced on us by the government. Thanks to the work of the department. where we are doing really well, we can do better, we need to do better, because children, foster and adopted are not only cheaper to look after, I think it's better for them to be looked after by fosterers and adopters, so thanks for the work you did on that. On the highways, a bit of a boring one, but it's valuable work that you did, which is the Highways Infrastructure and Asset Management Plan, the HIGHAM, good work which you did there, which helps Blake with his portfolio. And finally, on health, the Glenfield Heart Unit, which I think we've all are very glad for the work, not only that scrutiny did, but that we have all done on that. And then on future things, the training, I thought the idea that, I'm not sure if it was yours, Simon, as chairman, or Rosita's, as our lead spokesman, to get peer evaluation of the scrutiny chairman, to see how they thought it was doing, I thought it was, at the time I was a bit sceptical of it, but I think it was good work and well worth doing. So to reassure you all and to thank my members for the work they do on scrutiny, we do resource it well, we do value what you do, and we do listen to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Rushton. I've got one more speaker, and that's Mr Richardson.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to stand up and comment as the chairman of the Adults and Communities Scrutiny Committee. It's been a real privilege for the last year to do this, and I would like to echo the comments made by Mr Galton, that one of the real valuable experiences of those committees is when members of the public turn up, and they have on several occasions in the last twelve months in adults and communities on particularly difficult and challenging issues, and one of them's in the report, which was the reconfiguration of in-house learning. Now, I'd like to pay tribute to all members of that committee, the support from officers, but also to the cabinet member, in this case Richard Blunt, who came and listened and took into account the fact that officers and cabinet members went away and looked at the discussions and came up with a proposal, which I think in the end met the wishes, not dressed of this council as members, it was scrutiny at its best, and I just think it would be wrong of me not to comment on that, so I think it's a good team effort, and scrutiny done well, and I echo the comments made by our leader, is one of the most effective things we can do, it means we don't end up like a Northamptonshire, because we have that effective scrutiny to make sure we do stop. I can't resist being tongue-in-cheek near the end, I also sit on the scrutiny commission, and I do echo the comments made by Simon, I thought the presentation by Seven Trent Water was fabulous, and another example of where a public utility might have felt they were coming to put their head into the lion, or the, you know, their head into Lion's Den, as it were, and get it bitten off, where it was a nice, proper scrutiny, proper questioning, which I hope will form the template for other utilities to come back. Would that have been the case on the SGP? And I think the SGP is quite an interesting one, because I think there's one problem with the SGP, and it's the word plan, it's not a plan, it's a vision. So if you look at paragraph two, it says, we felt that a long-term vision would benefit the local area. If one stops thinking it was a plan which is going to have detail, it makes sense, it is a vision, and then goes into the detail of the local plans which each district do, which makes perfect sense. Now, the Lib Dems are actually long on visions with not much detail, I was just reflecting that their manifesto in two thousand and seventeen said, we will build at least ten garden cities in England, and not anywhere can I find where they're going to build them, so that's a vision, that's what an SGP is, a vision, it's not got the detail, but it has the vision. So Lib Dems can do vision at manifesto level, shame they can't here.
Thank you, Mr Richardson. Mr Galton, would like to sum up, please.
Well, thank you, Chairman, I would thank members on the whole for their generally positive responses, with perhaps the exception of the last one. I have heard it suggested on that, but perhaps it goes into too much detail, yeah, perhaps it should not be the case that you can sit here in twenty eighteen and predict how many houses you're going to need in twenty forty-five or twenty fifty, that actually it should set the vision and the broad parameters and not put the numbers in, and they will come later, and they will change, but it will set mythology rather than actual numbers, but that's perhaps a debate for another day. So, in answer to the leader's comment, actually, the peer reviewing came from the Centre for Public Scrutiny, because the guy came up, we asked him to come, and he came very helpful for a day, and that was one of his suggestions, which we would key take on board, and yeah, I think that it's right that chairs are peer reviewed and have the opportunity to receive constructive comments on their style. I don't think I've been done yet, I think that is an issue that's outstanding, so, but I should subject myself to that as and when required, Chair. So, in closing, thank you very much for the comments, I would just say if any member has a suggestion for a service or an item that they would like to see scrutinised, please put that in through your commissioner, and it will be considered for the work programme. And secondly, yeah, we welcome members of the public, but we also welcome local members that want to come and have an input and want to speak and make their point about a report or an item affecting their division, and that's entirely right, that members should be able to do that and patch issues. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Galton. Well, I've got a proposal and a second, all in favour? Thank you. Motion. Move on now to Agenda Item Number Seven, Report of the Constitution Committee. Mr Rushton, please.
I think I have to move them separately, don't I, Lauren? Oh, I move A and B, do I? I formally move motion one, A and B.
Mr Shepherd.
I'm a second that.
Mr Rushton. Do we all approve the motion? Mr Galton?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, I realise this is going to be approved, or at least be approved and then stand deferred to the next meeting, but the report does acknowledge concerns that myself and Dr Ironan did raise about this, and I appreciate that it needs to be looked at in the context of widening the role and scope of the meetings either side, but nevertheless, there are very few opportunities for backbench members in the council to hold the administration to account by way of questions, notices of motion, and one less opportunity is something that we are concerned is going. Now, what I've actually heard about this, Chairman, is that actually this meeting will be a way for the leader to get away to other parts of the world a bit earlier for Easter, because he won't, he won't have to wait for the March meeting, but that aside, a serious point is that there are few opportunities for members to stand and debate, to raise issues, yes, there is remains the ability to call a meeting, and we have done that in the past, and if there's a major issue of concern to the public, we give notice that we will use those powers to do that again, but I, we would have preferred to see those meetings remain in the calendar, in the diary, and then they could be cancelled if there was no items of business, but they would remain there if there was business to be done and if there were issues that members wanted to raise, so as it stands, Chair, we can't support this.
Dr Ironan.
Thank you, Chair. Our group did have concerns about losing this meeting, and for similar reasons as those expressed by councillor Galton, that the, there is that loss of the opportunity to ask questions, but we are reasonably satisfied that by changing the meetings either side to make them less ceremonial, to make it possible to bring motions and questions to the budgetary meeting and to the more ceremonial May meeting, is that because this party is very concerned about the funding to this authority and to local government, and clearly there is a cost to running a meeting, and a tendency not to cancel it, even if there's no business, because you only have to have one councillor put a question in, and you've got business, that it is a good enough proposal, I understand that there is the opportunity for councillors to request an additional meeting or to replace the meeting on a needed, as needed basis, and so with those caveats and understandings, my group will be supporting the motion.
Thank you, Dr Ironan. Mr Mulaney.
We only have, so the proposal is to reduce it from six meetings to five, that's not many meetings, not many opportunities to challenge the administration, not many opportunities to bring motions and to raise other issues, really, that's, we should be having as much opportunities as possible to scrutinise what the county cabinet is doing. I know people have said, well, you can call your own meetings, but when that was done in the past for the fire authority issues, we were condemned for calling a meeting, and people said, oh, you shouldn't be calling extra meetings. To reduce it from six to five is to significantly reduce the opportunities that not only the Liberal Democrats have, but Labour councillors have, and Conservative backbenchers have to take up issues in front of the whole council, and I'm very surprised that the Labour Party should be supporting this reduction in opportunities for people to raise issues before the full council, they're an opposition group such as ours, they're presumably not going to get anything from the administration in return for backing this constitutional amendment that reduces opportunities for scrutiny, opportunities for the power of the backbenchers, so I'm very surprised that they should be not joining us in opposing this, I would hope that all Lib Dem, Labour and Conservative backbenchers would vote against this, because, you know, we do need, in particular for the budget meeting, a standalone budget meeting where we can raise just the budget issues, because this is such an enormous issue in terms of the raising council tax, in terms of the cutbacks to services, in terms of the lack of fair funding, we really do need that standalone budget meeting so that we can raise solely at that meeting all the issues to do with the budget in front of the full council, so I would ask that we drop these plans and keep the meeting in place to give as much scrutiny as possible for the whole of this council, thank you.
Mr Kaufman. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I have deep concerns at the reduction of a meeting, I look back on how things have changed over the years and the democratic accountability that has happened here, I only have to look and see the highway forums where people could talk and discuss have disappeared. I look back to the days when this council used to have proper committees that made decisions, and all members were equal, they have disappeared, and I notice in the report here on page forty-seven, seven, it mentions the way things have changed since the Local Government Act of two thousand, and that council meetings have been less meaningful, well, indeed they have, but it's this council's own decision to go to a cabinet structure that has meant that these meetings become less meaningful. Unfortunately, wearing another hat, a member of a borough council which still has a committee system where all councillors are equal, and I believe there's some other, there's at least one other council in Leicester, Leicestershire, that makes decisions the way that we make them, but this is what this council had chosen years ago while I was in the political wilderness, but nevertheless, the good thing is that we can't make a decision this afternoon, and I wonder if the people proposing this would go away and think of ways, rather than losing meeting, but think of ways of making full council meetings more meaningful, let us discuss things that mean something to members, because you're quite right, I find them extremely boring most of the time, so what we should be doing is improving the quality of debate and the items that are on the agenda, rather than reducing the number of meetings, so thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Kaufman. Now the speakers, Mr Rushton, please.
Can I assure the leader of the Liberal Democrat group that I don't go anywhere in March, this March meeting, there was nothing, historically is not much on the agenda, it saves fifteen thousand in the round by coming here, it also, as Terry says, makes the meetings either side more interesting, that we can put other things on the budget meeting and other things on the ceremonial meeting, and Mr Kaufman says, we want more meetings, they're all boring, but he wants more, he wants more boredom, you can't say one thing and then say they're boring, admittedly, they are boring, I mean, this meeting today has been pretty poor, apart from the report of the scrutiny commissioners, no notice of motion, very few low-ball questions, you don't take advantage of what you've got already, so you can't complain about losing a meeting where nothing happens, and to say that the Labour group are not an effective opposition, Mr Mulaney, they're damn sight more effective than you lot are.
On that note, I've got a proposal and a second. All those in favour, please? Those against? Motion carried. Thank you. And that concludes the business for today, thank you all, and safe journey home.